Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Mount Mansfield School Board meeting. Today is October 10th. My name is Edie Grantill, Board Chair. I will start the meeting by running through the agenda. A roll call, we'll have a roll call, community comments, and then we have budget priorities presentation. Sally will give us a principal's report from school. We are in Huntington at Bruce Pierce today. We'll have an Act 127 information update, which is, which will impact our budget. So that's a budget information. We have the student drug and alcohol policy that we started looking at in May or June. So we can approve that tonight. We have an update on that. Approving the minutes from our last meeting at the end of September. Committee reports, where we will also add in there the B S D A. We need to have a, we need to choose a voting member for the annual conference. And then we will have an executive session to end the meeting. Does anybody else have modifications to the agenda? Okay, we can get started. Pat, if you could roll call for us.
Thank you. Tara Anderson.
She is not going to be here tonight.
Kevin Campbell.
Here.
Ben Chadwick.
Pardon.
Allison Conan. Dale Conley.
There.
Derek Gildemeister.
Here.
Edie Grantill.
Here.
Diane Pearson-Glipman.
She'll be late.
Susan Lillet.
Here.
Ethan Maurer. Stu Corrigeal.
He will be joining late.
Katie Nelson.
Here.
Lisa Pollak.
Here.
Andrew Quan.
Here.
Great, thank you. Any community comments? Molly, so if you could, I'm just going to read through the agendas. Community comments will be limited to no more than five minutes per person. The board requests that participants clearly state their name, place of residence, and topic of comment. The board will take no action on items raised during community comments and dialogue exchanges will be for clarification purposes. Laura's yours.
Can I start?
Please.
Okay, thank you. I'm Molly Abby, and I live in Jericho. And the purpose of my comment is just to add. Oh, sorry, I'm getting an echo.
Oh, sorry, I'm getting an echo.
It's just to add. Sorry, the echo's.
We don't, we don't have the echo here, so.
Okay, okay, I'll try to just.
Okay, I'll try to just.
I would like to.
I would like to.
Vegetary things.
Vegetary things.
I've come up with different classes that I am interested in being offered at the high school. One of them is. The driver's ed, but they mentioned this in previous years.
I hate to cut in, but I'm really getting a bad echo as well. I'm having trouble hearing.
Now we're not under. So do you have any solutions, ideas? Okay, so Kevin's asking if we mute the room maybe while she's talking.
Yeah, I can do that. And maybe, I don't know if you want to turn off your camera too might help if you have lower bandwidth.
Okay, let me try. Is that any better? Because I'm not hearing my echo now. Okay, perfect. All right, so what I was saying is, because you're going to be talking about the budget, I just wanted to mention two different things about classes at the high school. One of them is, I know that driver's ed is offered, obviously, but consistently there are not enough sections of it, nowhere near enough sections of it to meet the needs of many kids in their schedules and families. And that requires families to pay for private lessons. And so I just wanted to bring that up again. The idea of trying to offer more sections of driver's ed, possibly as an A period, as I know that many kids who take, who are either in other programs or have heavy schedules, that there's no room. That's one thing. The other class that I would like the school board to urge, or I urge the school board to think about offering is a civics class. Growing up in California, civics was a requirement for all high school graduates in California. And the UC schools at the time that I went to school required it going in. I'm assuming they still do, but they required it going in. And if you didn't have it, you had to take a civics class in college in order to graduate. Again, that's just a UC school, but given everything that is going on in our country and the challenge to our democracy, I think it is imperative that kids be required to take civics. And I know we can't make that whole decision for the state, but I, I would urge MMU USD to be leading. Leading the charge in trying to change that and making civics a requirement and offering that first, not only offering it, but requiring it for students so that people understand how their government functions. Because, anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Any comments?
No.
Other community comments? Okay. All right, thank you. Before we jump to the budget priorities, I want to welcome our two student reps who are here for the first time tonight. So would you find introducing yourself with your, you could do like 10 seconds, just your name and your grade and the town you live in, or you can do something more while you're here. Your choice. I'm putting on the spot. I apologize. That's just real.
Hi, I'm Gracie Beatty. I use she, they pronouns. I'm a senior at MMU, obviously, and I live in Jericho.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Abby. I'm a junior at MMU. I use she or pronouns, and I'm from Boulder.
Cool. Thank you and welcome. We're thrilled that you're here and we're thrilled to have you joining our board. Thank you. We're pretty friendly if you have questions. It's just like.
That's a little bigger stuff.
All right, thank you. Budget priorities. We ready to start there? I don't know who are those starting with that, but if whoever the director is that is, just do a little hi hello.
So I thought we'd start at the, with facilities and go through the doc that's linked in that order. Phil, I'm covering for Phil tonight, so I'm going to talk a little bit about what are some of the significant priorities for Mount Mansfield Unified Union as far as facilities go. I'm going to start with some pretty significant mandates that are going to impact the budget. First is storm water mitigation. So if you have three acres of property and you're in the Champlain Valley, then you have to have a stormwater plan. So we have several schools and they're listed in the document that qualify for that. So what we need to do is, we have to get a plan. You have to have an engineer design a plan, and then you have to get permit, and then you have to do the construction. So the, the cost of that right now is unknown. But we do have, we do have Camel's Hump in Richmond, which we need two separate mitigation sites that, that they have a plan and we've submitted the permit. Now we're trying to figure out what it's going to cost. Right now, there's initially about, they're saying it's a 90-10 split with a certain amount of money that is in this pool, but that'll probably go pretty quickly. So we're trying to position ourselves so that we can optimize the 90% of revenue that's out there right now. But we still have to fund 10% of it. And so we're talking, these sites are very expensive. So, you know, we're talking 250, you know, the, the high school, probably a million. So these are very expensive litigation sites. So we've been meeting with state representatives, not legislators, but people that are charged to get this, these stormwater sites done. And essentially what they've said, we've asked a lot of questions, and they have said, yeah, you know, they've answered us, but said, you need to do this. So it's something that we're going to be required to do. So in this year's budget, we're hoping that we will be able to do a few sites, like one year at a time, so that we can spread out the costs. But we will see an increase in the budget next year between, for this specifically, six, you know, 60 plus thousand that we're planning, new money in the budget that we're going to need to have in there. The other part that is important to know is radon testing. So by June 2025, all schools have to do radon testing. And so we've gotten some quotes to do that, and that's about 55,000. So the, and we, we are hoping to do that next year. And so we're going to need a budget for that as well. What we don't know is what some of the mitigation might be if there was, you know, higher levels that are, that are found in the schools. And then PCB testing. This is a pretty big unknown. I shared some information with the board and in our district happenings this past month, just letting community members know that we're required to do this testing. We're going to let them know whether we find nothing or whether the action levels are high enough so that we need to do some mitigation. Right now, there is a pool of money, but we don't know how to cover some of these costs. You don't know, you know, how long that will last. And I don't believe the money right now qualifies for construction. It's really mitigation. That could affect the budget. Then just some other pieces that we're really trying to stay on top of, and Jeff will talk about this a little as well, is we've been updating our access control systems and certain safety components of all of our buildings. And so that's something that we're going to need to keep budgeting for and maybe even add a little bit more money. The access control systems, they're working fine right now, but they've become antiquated quickly. And we replaced three probably in the last six months. So we're going to need to make sure that we budget for that as well. And just making sure that doors are working correctly and that our buildings are as safe as they can be. We've been really proactive on trying to update certain systems in all of our buildings, specifically HVAC systems when we need to. And we're going to continue to do that, use our budget to be able to do that, both on our capital expenditure side and then in the school-based budgets. We have been very successful on getting some grants. Our wood chip systems, we just recently, we submitted another grant to have them inside rebuilt. But our control systems have been all updated at Mount Mansfield, Camel's Hump, and Browns River. So pretty, pretty big game changer, because now they're going to be really super efficient and, you know, in the 21st century. We've also replaced a lot of circulation pumps, which may not sound like a big deal, but these are like 40 grand, each one of them. So trying to stay up incrementally on the HVAC side, because we know that's important. And, and there's some big state mandates that are coming down. You're going to need to prioritize as well. Questions?
And so just when we, when we say questions, you're part of the board, you have the opportunity to ask questions. We don't have generally a community that's questioning, so. I have a question, but I want to see if anybody else has a question before we go there. What's the likelihood that we will have the first school with PCB testing results back before we finalize the budget? So that we have some kind of a.
Takes from start to finish 15 weeks. I think it's a pretty good chance. Because, you know, technically it's supposed to be shorter than that, but it could take up to, to 15 weeks. I think we would have, I think we would have some results back, but maybe not all. October, we've got Camel's Hump and Browns River. I still, we still haven't gotten a confirmed date for Camel's Hump, but Browns River is starting this week. The 12th, they're going to start testing. But I think we will have an idea of something before we, we have to finalize the budget. So there's a lot, there are many other things in the, in the facility section. And, but I'm trying to tell you what are some of our high-level priorities as we are trying to make sure our schools are safe and healthy, incrementally update them. I think if you go to any of our buildings, you know, I get comments all the time. We've, we've done a really good job of staying up on some preventative maintenance and replacing things that need to be replaced. You know, like toilets and floors and, you know, things like that, that, that can catch up to you if you're not careful.
I guess I have one other question. Is, is any of this possible to be deferred? Or is all of this must do? And if we, if we have to cut, we would have to cut someplace else in budget.
Can defer stormwater. We can do it over a period of years, but we have to do it. PCB testing, no, can't defer that. You have some costs. And then the radon testing, it cannot be deferred. That's in legislation and statute. I would say no, other than, you know, maybe the HVAC systems, you know, most of them, all of them work. And they work actually, you know, pretty darn well. It's, it's when you can't get to parts that you run into trouble. And then we do have in, at the high school, we have to do some dehumidification in the 400 wing, you know, as well. So those are things that we're going to need, we can't defer.
Sort of in order? It's Jeff next.
Jeff is next. Whoa, Ryan.
Kirk, folks, you don't know, can you tell everybody who you are?
Yes, I'm Jeff Wallace, Director of Technology and Network Engineering for the district. And I made a little slideshow to help kind of keep it organized. I'll try to be succinct as John's. And so to back to Paul. So instead of just kind of, I've done the, you've seen what our district priorities are in the document. And so I really wanted to just highlight some of the things that are a main priority for technology and all this. And really, that's these things, cybersecurity, information, some of the newer information systems, access control, as John mentioned, and then looking at our infrastructure. So first, I wanted to talk a little bit about cybersecurity, because I think this is something that I know that last year we got a grant to look at cybersecurity. And part of that grant was really, they provided some money for us to look at systems as well as, and working with the state to kind of create some new processes around cybersecurity. There's, the big thing is that schools are now the biggest target, right? The, the, the last two years, it's doubled every year, the, the amount of attacks against schools. And that's really, because schools are an easier target than like financial institutions with teams of security people. So, and they're really after student data, because they can take that student data and do a lot of fraud with that. So it's really one of the technology priorities to, to make sure that we're protecting that data. You know, I'm not going to go into all this, but basically, there we've had some major systems hits, including Eastmont Piller last year was hit, so nearby, down for weeks. And that really affects operations and all of that. So that's why this is a priority. Phishing is kind of the number one way that people get into networks. And so really, I'm going to move into what we're doing. Again, looking at the, working with the state, we are developing procedures around cybersecurity, putting new systems in place with grant money, including monitoring systems to kind of look at what's going on in our networks and identifying things kind of before they happen. We are also developing an incident response plan with the state. Part of the grant is that we're actually developing templates for the rest of the state. And then we might have to present that actually next month. So it's, it's been a good process for us, but there's identified a lot of things that we need to do. We've put most of those practices into place, and part of that is follows the guidelines from our cybersecurity insurance provider as well. So we've been working with them. And then, you know, we've been doing, working on training. I remember last year, you guys put in place the network procedure or policy around providing digital citizenship training for our students, working on that, our digital learning leaders getting that into schools. And then we've worked on establishing campus as well. So the, the, the bottom line with, with the dollars on that, we've gotten grants for some of these systems. We put new systems in place, but we just need to make sure that that's still continuing with that as a priority. I don't see any new money for next year. That's something that we're, we always have to kind of be, make sure that we're protecting our systems and our data. Last year, we created a technology information implementation committee. And this committee really was built up of Andrew and myself and some principals, teachers, digital learning leaders, and really looking at data systems and how we can collect, how we're collecting and using data at student learning. And that process kind of led to, this is a big flow chart with all of that, systems and data, but it basically all comes to a new data system that we've decided to purchase this year. It's called Anorama. And we used Essar Funds last year to purchase this data system. And so it's about, I would say about $36,000 from Essar Funds. So that's something that we're implementing throughout this year. And for the following, but, you know, next year, we'll have the budget that. But that really looks at academic data, S E L, survey data, behavior data, and how this is all, M T S S data, and everybody. Access control, John mentioned this a little bit. A number of our systems, well, all of our systems were antiquated. They're lacking some of the lockdown requirements. You know, we want to be able to provide a lockdown button that people can push and it locks all the doors and make sure that, you know, we can have it shut off access, card access, and can notify people. So John notified and we saw, we should stop. We have done, these are the schools we've done already. Last year, we did Richmond Elementary and Camel's Hump. This year, we've done Bruce Pierce and Smiley, and Browns River is on schedule to do. Part of that is intercom systems as well. If you bend the Browns River and try to use, there's a little intercom button outside there. You push that and it does nothing. Sure, but that's really things we're trying to fix. And that is a budget thing, as John said, we're looking at. But it makes sure as well. And then the last kind of piece that I wanted to hit was really the technology infrastructure. And that is kind of underlies all of this, you know, all of our, there's really the two sides. There's devices, of course, then there's the student learning side of it, and then there's a lot of operations. And we rely on technology and things working for just our day-to-day operations. So making sure that our budgeting is in line with that. And we really created a sustainable budget. We're very lean on, you know, the devices that we purchase. It's all based on student enrollment, staff enrollment. So we're not purchasing anything extra, and I think we're at a good place budget-wise. We can cycle out processes in place for all of our equipment. And so just making sure that we continue to fund that, make, make this work. I did include a little cost savings. So we purchase, part of that is cycling out our access points and our network switches and all of that. This last year, we spent $150,000 to replace some network equipment. We're able to get 60% of that made for through E rate funding, so about $90,000 that we got this last year. And that's something that we've had, you know, for several years, we spend about that much every year on network equipment and get about that much back. So I think that's a positive, something that for next year, we'll just figure that out. I think that's everything that I have left out. So I'm glad to answer any questions. It was, you know, just a small couple nuggets of all of the stuff that goes on this year. But definitely underlies a lot of the other priorities that everyone's talking about.
There might be a question for you in the comment. Could just be a comment. If anybody have a question. So the question is, do our employees who have access to student personnel data have any extra security protections such as phishing-proof multi-factor authentication?
Yeah, so that's a good question. And student data, you know, there's lots of student data in different places. So one of the things that over the last year, we're required to have multi-factor for a lot of our data systems. And so all of our main student information systems have multi-factor to use Google, and that can provide multi-factor authentication. And, you know, we have ruled out that, everyone's seen the little phishing icon. So really, and the biggest way to prevent phishing, because they're pretty crafty about getting things through. We have lots of technology in place to filter that stuff coming in. So there's nothing that's really phishing-proof, I would say, but really making sure that the staff are aware and careful about what they're clicking on and recording that stuff when they see it so that it kind of blocks it for everyone else. That's really the, the main things we're looking at. We do our, all of our student data, we now have processes in place. Part of the employee handbook for staff is that not to share, they're not allowed to share student data with any third parties. You know, that could be the old, you know, something, I've got this new tool, a new technology, and I'm going to bring all my kids there and let them sign up and, you know, log in with their Google accounts and all that. So we have now technology in place and processes and procedures in place to prevent that. Any third party that we're, we ask staff to, or require staff to basically fill out a form, submit those technology tools, and there's a vetting process that includes student data privacy agreements with every vendor. So we ensure that, you know, we have a contract with every vendor that holds student data. And here's exactly how they can use the data, what they can and can't do, and probably destroy it when we're done with that partnership. So lots of things, procedures in place to protect student data. Just a very curious, so a parent or a guardian or caretaker can assume that if a teacher asks a child to enroll in a program that that's been through that process embedded?
Spanish.
Yeah, the only, I mean, so there are, there can sometimes be lenders that don't sign our agreements. In that case, we need grant and permission. I don't know of any that are doing that right now.
Spanish, that Camel's Hump is doing that.
But there might be some specific software or other things that, you know, a teacher might want to use in classroom. We can't give student data privacy and it's something that they feel is educationally necessary. Then they will send home a form to parents and then we're, we should, we're. It's definitely something. I mean, try to, you know, there's a lot of pressure from national organizations for these student data requirements. And so it has forced a lot of companies to rethink, you know, whether or not they'll create these common access schools. So it's, for us, we try to not use tools that won't sign data or say that, you know, we guarantee that should be.
I guess I just have like a clarified question, like by like third-party vendors, do we mean that like all like educational tools online that students need to like sign into for like classroom use? Or is it like more specific than that?
Yes, any, any tool that collects any student data. So if it's just a website you're going to. That collects any student data. So if it's just a website you're going to, you know, um, you're not providing any data. But even that Google sign on, they're collecting your email, your name. And, and then they have your personal data stored with your username. So that's what we're trying to. Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you talk about this tech stuff, your staff, but a little bit. That has been very steady. Hasn't adequate to mentally me. You were just mentioning one, one challenge.
Yeah. So I think what's it, what's it look like? Do we have enough staff for next year, two, three? Yeah, I mean, I think um for us, we run a very lean staff, which I think is um. Uh, you know, we're a very close team and we run uh things where very standardized in rest of schools, which makes a huge difference. We, you know, we purchase all the same devices involved. Be all of our processes across all the schools around technology is all the same. So it's very consistent. So we're able to. Um, run it with a lower number of staff. Uh, I was talking to Essex the other day, the director there. They have twenty six staff. Um, they're a little bit larger district than us, but twenty six technology staff. We have ten. Um, so we're definitely. You know, lower staff, but we definitely uh are more. Um, consistent about the processes we have in place.
It is, yeah, it's steady. I mean, it hasn't had a lot of turnover.
We haven't had a lot of turnover, no, usually, but turnover we have are people retiring. Um. So we have a. You know, we've had a couple key people leave in the last few years, but definitely I've hired some really great staff and. Uh, you know, our, our tech team is very, works together. We do a lot of cross-training. Uh, we do a lot of work in different schools. You know, each tech kind of understands that. We do a lot of professional development. I'm needing a lot. To really make sure that everyone understands, you know, if they jump into another school or building, that. Um, I, I don't anticipate anything. Especially for next year, um, new staff. I mean, the biggest area that uh it'd be of concern is really all the state reporting and the, the data. The state requires is a big, um, has been a big lift for us. We've again, you know, a great data manager, she's been with us for twenty years, I don't know. But so um. That position is, is key. And I know that like Chittany South. Champlain Valley now is um. They've recently hired, I think, two extra data people. They have like three data people now. I know, yeah, a lot of districts have all the data people and, you know, we're lucky to have someone right now that is able to. On pressure.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions. And um, is Rebecca gonna do the HR first?
Yep. I saw her.
Yeah, I'm here. Hi, hi.
Hi, hi.
I'm Rebecca Tebow. I'm the Director of Human Resources. And, and so I thank you um for being here tonight. And um I know you've had a chance to read through all of the priorities and so. Uh, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things um that are um on here for human resources. And I just want to specifically talk about. Um, retention and recruitment. Um, these continue to be a priority. I feel like as Jeff was just talking about staffing, which is nice to lead into me. Um, we're really fortunate to be pretty well-staffed this school year. Um, and we've, you know, recruited in a variety of places to, to find staff and will continue to do that. Um, moving forward. And so investing some in our recruitment efforts has been really helpful. Um, we post on a, a pretty wide variety of platforms, you know, including like top schools, jobs. Ed Weekly, um, you know, some of those bigger sources indeed. Um, but then also a lot, you know, a lot of the people that we find is through networking, um, through our district happenings or in newsletter that goes out to the community. As well as our roots and wings to our staff, um, who also help us find people. You know, we post through Vermont Job Link. Um, with the state and then through Handshake, which goes out to colleges and universities. So we really have um tried to diversify. Where we're posting positions. Um, we also this coming up year uh are looking at doing the visa process to find teachers for our Spanish immersion program. So that's another. Another exciting thing that we're working on um going into next year. And then, um, and Aaron Little is on here who's going to talk about transportation, but we've been trying some new things specifically. Aaron and his team have done a great job um in training bus drivers to get their CDL. And so hiring people that aren't necessarily, that don't have that qualification. Um, but getting them there. So that's been really instrumental in us finding bus drivers, which has been a challenge across the state, if not the country. Um, and then also Aaron is working to um bring on a mechanic and has, we reposted to do an apprentice um position and it looks like we'll probably find someone. Um, for that. So um kudos to Aaron and his team. Um, but with all positions, we're trying to be as creative as possible to get the right people um working in our district. And then in regards to retaining staff, we really um have a streamlined onboarding process and part of that is. Um, they, all of our new hires start with a new hire orientation, which is a two-day orientation that we do each year for. All staff and that, you know, we go through policies and procedures and learn about the district and that. So that's been fundamental um in bringing people into our district. Um, as well as, you know, investing, continuing to invest in our um staff salaries and their benefits. And we do have an agreement, um, we, a negotiated agreement through twenty twenty five, which is great. Um, teachers will be getting an increase next year of six point five percent. And support staff of four and a half percent. Um, so we have those numbers, which makes it very helpful. Uh, and then with benefits, uh, the health insurance, as you've, you've probably know, um, every year we seem to see a double-digit increase in the health insurance costs. Um, going forward. So just again, continuing to invest in, in those benefits will be crucial. And we also have a staff wellness program. Every building has a wellness leader, someone on staff that really leads. Your staff wellness in their buildings. Uh, and we continue to work with uh with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont and with VHI with PATH. Um, to bring those, those programs to our staff, you know, providing um all kinds of different mental health um, uh, resources. As well as just physical um health resources. And so that's something that we'll continue to work with that, um, those programs going into next year as well. Another big thing that we do that's important um budget-wise is our mentoring program in our district. And so we have. Um, veteran teachers that mentor new teachers that started the district and it's a, it's a, it's a big investment um for our district and also it has big outcomes. And so. We'll continue to do that program, um, the PATH mentoring program, PATHwise mentoring program. Um, which, you know, teachers are typically paired for their first two years. Um, when they, when they start. And so that's been a fun, it's been really, really uh crucial in retaining staff and helping them be successful in those first couple of years of teaching. Uh, another big piece that I just want to touch on is our professional development. We continue to um provide professional development opportunities in a variety of ways. Um, so as um I mentioned, you know, all the way from bus drivers up, you know, to food service. And then our teaching staff and our administrators. And so we're trying to make sure that everyone has the training and the resources they need to be successful in their positions. Um, you know, we offer tuition reimbursement um for most of our staff. Uh, they can take college courses, a lot of workshops um and trainings as well. Um, everyone in the district completes a, a required training each year to make sure that they have all of those policies and procedures and everything else that were legally required. But then there's a lot of other opportunity. Um, going into this school year, we've expanded our equity training and so that will be offered to all staff uh in our district. And that will be a, a big piece of um, of where we go moving forward. Um, we've also provided specific training um to some of our paras on things going on specifically with students that they're working with. And so we want to continue to. To work on those. Uh, we've also had some of our support staff starting to take college courses, which is exciting. Like if they're working in our Spanish immersion program to take an additional Spanish speaking course. To try and better those skills so they can be of more of support um in those classrooms. And so we'll continue, uh, like I said, that'll continue to be a priority. Um, for our HR budget looking, um, moving forward. And then I think Jeff mentioned this, but we also are updating our employee evaluation system. Which will also just help make that a smoother, uh, more efficient and kind of streamlined process for teachers and for administrators going through um that, that evaluation process. So that's kind of a high level of some of the priorities uh that we're working on in human resources. If you have questions, I'm happy to. Take them.
I'm not seeing any questions. Anybody? Okay, thank you so much, Brenda.
Thank you.
Aaron, transportation.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So looking ahead at buses, bus replacements, prices have gone up a little bit over the last three years. We're looking at about a hundred and thirty six thousand or so per bus. We replace. Approximately three buses per year to stay on our ten-year service life schedule. Um, so we'd be looking at, you know, about four hundred and ten uh for the next um. Set of buses that we, three buses that we would need to purchase. We are still waiting on our minivans that are due to come in. Um, those are, we're very close. We waited for about twelve months. And it looks like we'll be close to receiving some late fall this year to replace the aging minivans that we use for some of the non-CDL. Uh, transportation requirements. Uh, one of the other projects we've been looking at for a, a little while now is replacing the underground uh fuel storage tank. The underground storage tanks. Generally have a thirty to forty year service life. I think we're about thirty-three to thirty-four years into the service life. So we're planning on replacing that. Some preliminary estimates um. Do uh climb up to about the four hundred. To four hundred and fifty range. That's with uh replacing. An existing tank. Part of it is a facilities piece that I'll coordinate with Phil on. Um, he has a number two diesel fuel tank, ten thousand gallon tank alongside our fuel tank and. That, as I understand, that fuel tank for the heating fuel um. Is in a place of being uh eliminated from the need for the system. So that would come out at the same time we replace a fuel tank. We're also looking at a new fuel pump and within electronic inventory control system. And then electronic monitoring for the levels and leakage testing and all of that. Software, we're continuing to work with our uh routing company, using some of the tools, continuing to. Fully implement all, switching over all of our bus routes into that system. Um, there's no additional funding uh required for that. That's about five thousand dollars a year. So. In the uh scheme of software for transportation, it's uh, it's a very good affordable annual price to maintain that electronic system. Uh, staffing, a big thank you to Rebecca and her team for helping us uh recruit drivers um in, in driver candidates and mechanic candidates. We do. Have uh one full-time driver position uh open that we're still recruiting for, the full-time mechanic position. We are very close to making an offer to. Uh, a new mechanic. So that's our last. Campaign to fill that position was very successful. I think in four days, we had uh several qualified candidates who applied for the position. That's all I have for transportation at this time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Uh, I will, yeah. Um. One is, um. Just thinking about the idea of um, I'm, I'm Charlie Wayne and Chuck Lacy. Uh, installing an underground tank for uh fuel oil for thirty, forty years. With, uh, I don't know how that aligns with Vermont's climate goals, but I think it probably doesn't. Given that uh by thirty, I think is a pretty big year. So that seems like a big investment into uh. Something that is getting phased out. So I, I don't know if there are other alternatives uh for that, but I just. I'm just curious about that kind of investment into something that um. We're, we're trying to wipe out. I think additionally, I, I'm just curious, are, are there any conversations or discussions about like revamping our bus? System. Um, I know. I, I'm gonna speak from my personal experience. I know when I see kids leave Campbell's Hump or Richmond, they're full. By the time they get to the end of the route, there may be one or two kids on the bus driving for. Ten or more miles. Um, is there possibly to change and have a more diverse mix? Of uh types of vehicles so that, um, for example, I was talking with one student who has an hour and fifteen minute. Bus ride to the bottom of Bolton um access road. That seems like a pretty long time given the distance. Um, sort of counter, my daughter has the same ride here. Um, and it's twice as long. So there, I'm just curious if there's uh any conversations around like looking at it differently. No. Need more bus drivers. That's always a challenge, but just curious.
Thank you, Chuck. Yeah, I'll tell you. So to answer the first question regarding the fuel. Um, you know, one of the options could be an above-ground tank. I'm not sure, uh, you know, what the price difference on something like that would be. Also purchasing fuel off-site, you know, that, there are generally drawbacks to doing that unless you have a facility that's right nearby. Uh, that you can get the, you know, the purchase price negotiated and a very short distance to get there to, to. Um, buy the fuel. Um, so, and we're still looking at replacing a tank and we can continue to look at. Other options, but hot, besides the underground storage. Um, however, that's generally, you know, most gas stations, when you see a, you know, fuel pump changed out, they keep it below ground. Obviously, that's for the space requirement. Um, we don't have a whole lot of above-ground space um at MMU. And then there's also, you know, the aesthetics of it as well, but those are certainly. Um, options to get more information on and I will be happy to gather more information on those options. Uh, bus routing, so we do have the uh routing software that I'm continuing to work on to get fully implemented for all of our bus routes, which, you know, we start. Um, which we've been doing, which is uh putting in our existing bus routes and trying to, you know, learn how to maximize the. Uh, optimization tools. Um, the optimization tools. Um, can provide us with projections on how many uh buses are needed based on peak travel times, say at the end of the day. Um, we do have routes that um some days when there aren't activities in sports, the, the bus routes are. Um, quite busy and very full. And then there are days or weeks when sports and athletics and after-school activities are in session. That the regular dismissal routes and the activity in high school routes are um, you know, balanced out a little bit differently. Um, so we certainly always want to look at providing the safest and most, you know, um. Uh, efficient for the student as far as time goes, uh, trip. You know, we don't want to see students on the bus, you know, forty-five minutes to an hour or longer, given some of the geography that we cover. Um, certainly from the high school in the afternoons, um, some of the trips can be longer. And so we always want to look at ways to reduce that. As far as the size of the vehicle goes, you know, we have. The uh average to. You know, smaller size, the average smaller size school bus, which is a seventy-two passenger, other than, you know, um. Shorter buses that are typically about half that, but they're generally, the seventy-two range is about the smallest that you um. You can use for regular standard bus routes, given the, you know, the, the variation of the number of students that can ride. Some school districts have seventy-seven passenger and ninety-six passenger school buses. Um, our facility isn't equipped to service anything over seventy-two passengers. So that's generally been, you know, the size that we've stuck with. We. For out-of-district schools, we do have uh one smaller school bus that we use for some of our students that attend schools around the county. Um, it's pretty limited on size, probably too small uh for uh a, a regular dismissal bus route. Um, adding bus routes to try to shorten students' ride time is, you know, one of the things that, you know, could potentially improve. Uh, ride times for students, but you know, looking at adding a bus route, um, you know, those are. Those are hopefully answers uh that will come from looking at the, the software and the optimization that it can provide typically. You know, we put in the size of the bus that we use, how much, you know, what the ride time is that we want to see students uh operate on. And then it'll tell us how many bus routes. So. Generally to shorten students' ride time, um, given the, the geography would probably. We're, it would probably tell us that we would need to add a bus route. So that's probably what we'd be looking at.
Question.
So a little advanced.
So the vans are hybrid vans. And we continue, and Aaron and I have talked about this a lot, that continue to try to see our electric buses, what they work here. And Aaron knows a lot more about that than I do, but right now there's some real limitations because of the weather, because of our, you know, two hundred square miles. But we're continuing to look for ways that we might be able to invest in those. We did add a route, I mean. Right, Aaron?
Yeah, we had, we had one route that was getting really full since post-COVID. More students were returning to the route. So we ended up adding a new bus route that split the difference between the two and really balanced out the route and made a much shorter ride times for a handful of students.
Thanks, Aaron.
I'm not seeing any other questions. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Andrew.
All right, Andrew Jones, I'm the Assistant Superintendent. You'll notice that I align each of the priorities to one of our six district priorities. And so the first one is aligned with our ongoing implementation of multi-tiered systems of support. And specifically looking at the Star Universal Screeners, which we've adopted for this year. We're currently paying for those with the remainder of our SR3 funds. And we'll need to add that into our budget next year. Just a little background on what these screeners are. So we have some for math and for ELA, and we also have some for early grades literacy as well. And essentially what these screeners are for is to give kind of a really quick dipstick into kind of where students are at at different points of the year related to both math and ELA so that teachers can really quickly identify those students who are in need so that we can make sure that we're providing them with what are called tier-two extra supports or tier-three interventions. And this is a, this doesn't replace necessarily some of the other tools we've been using, but we're now using things like the FNP, which you may have been familiar with, and the PNOA, which is for math. Those are paper-based and they take a really long time. And that's been one of the issues I've heard since I've been here. And so we still will use those more as diagnostic tools. Give, you know, the screener shows that students need more support. We can have that as a backup. But with the Star Screeners, which are one or two big screeners, the other one is called the MAP screener from a different company, but throughout the state, usually STAR or MAP are the two main ones because there, really it's the efficiency that is most important, the quick ability to kind of gauge where students are at and to have one piece of data to operate from. So that's one, one piece related to our early grades literacy proficiency work. We were able to hire a full-time pre-K for literacy instructional coach. And that is really the core piece to help with the ongoing work of really helping to strengthen the phonics work that we're doing in our schools. And so the ongoing job embedded professional learning that the coach provides, both on a one-to-one basis, small group basis and full group basis, is really the linchpin that is going to help ensure that we stop doing some of the practices that we've been doing before and implement the new practices aligned with the science of reading, which is what we're working on right now. And so that position, we, that'll maintain the funding that we're currently doing. So that wouldn't be anything new for the next fiscal year. Next is curriculum coordination. This is ongoing work. And the main component of this is making sure that we have funds to pay teacher curiam to work after school and during the summer, which is sometimes really the only time that they have available. And so we want to make sure that we honor that time because our teachers are really, they're the ones who are doing this work and they know what to do around curriculum. And so our instructional coaches help to do some of this, but it's the teachers who are looking at the rubrics. They're the ones who are looking at the unit plans and trying to make those improvements over time. So ensuring that we have those funds to pay them for the time is important. Again, that's just maintaining current funding. And then the next piece is related to our equity and inclusion for Abar work throughout the district. And this is, this particular budget priority is related to our pre-K eight equity and inclusion coach. So last year and this year, that is being funded through our SR3 funds, which will then run out next year. And so this would be something that we would add. We have some funds that can pay for point five FTE, but the other point five FTE would need to be added to the fiscal year twenty-five budget. And that is another critical piece. As you know, our anti-bias, anti-racism efforts are large. There's a lot of stuff to do on that front. And having someone who can provide the training, who can work with our teachers and administrators to identify what the needs are, has been crucially important over the last years. And that work has just got started. So those are kind of the four main budget priorities for me. Any, any questions on that?
Not seeing any in the room, any online? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mary, are you here? I don't have a poll listed this online.
She was on that.
Yes, I am. Hi, everyone.
Mary.
Hello. So I was, I met with the board last month. So some of the things that I mentioned last month, I can just highlight again this time. So the first priority is just around looking at the achievement gap for students with disabilities, but also any student that is struggling or below grade level. And so what our focus has been the last several years is to focus on the area of literacy and getting our special educators and our teachers highly trained in reading. And so it's really important that that work continue. So I'm recommending that we maintain the allocation that we've had for professional development in the area of literacy and math. And we've been using money from our IDEA B grant for that. So that would be my recommendation going into this next fiscal year. The other thing that we are recommending is we currently have a point five, so a half-time reading interventionist at Browns River Middle School. And so as we're really focusing on the area of reading, a recommendation would be to increase that position to a full FTE so that that person is available to work with children who need reading support that may be on an IEP, but that's not the area that they qualified for special education. So what that means is sometimes we have kids whose impact may have been in a different area, such as math or in the social emotional arena. And, but they still are struggling a little bit in math, but it's not enough to qualify for special education services. And so having access to a reading interventionist or a reading specialist is necessary for students who don't have that in an IEP, if that's an area of need. So the next thing is looking at just building our capacity. And this is also something that we've really been focusing on. And so we, since the pandemic, what we have seen is that some of our younger learners need the gift of time and need more time to work on self-regulation, work on school routines, work on learning what it means to be a student and some of those early skills that, that children can learn through play. And so one of the things that we have been thinking about is for students who are too old to remain in pre-K, but not quite ready to move into K, that we consider a transitional type classroom. So it's still in the talking stages and really looking at, would we have the numbers to really do something like this? And so we don't have any firm numbers of what we would need for staffing, but it may be that we would start small for next year and maybe think about just having one or two classrooms, which would require a teacher and a support staff. So we're still in the talking stages with that. The other thing that we are also thinking about is we currently have a multi-age self-contained classroom in special education at the elementary level that is at Richmond Elementary School. And what that program is, is it's a, it has a therapeutic component to it. And so for students who are not successful in the general ed setting and need more of a smaller staff to student ratio, where things are highly individualized in the classroom based on need, this type of program prevents children from being sent out of district. It's one more step along the continuum. And so we've really been thinking about, should we expand that model to include a second classroom at the elementary level, which would mean additional staffing? Or the other thought is, should we hire a board-certified behavior analyst that would be shared between Jericho Elementary and Richmond Elementary? And that that person then would be overseeing support staff that we would train. They would be called behavior interventionist and would, would work under the BCBA. What that would do is that will help us build capacity because we would be less reliant on outside agencies, which are very expensive to get BCBA's and BI's. It would also help to keep students from needing an out-of-district placement. So it's one more option. So again, we, the coordinators and I, along with the principals, this is a topic that we want to explore a little more this month as we're meeting and really get an idea of which of those two, the expanding into another classroom or hiring a BCBA for Richmond and Jericho makes the most sense for our needs right now. So the next thing is this, we have in our budget right now, we have a point five integration specialist at Richmond Elementary and we have a point five integration specialist at Jericho Elementary that we would maintain those positions. Again, they are really helping with the social emotional learning work. The next priority was, again, what Andrew was talking about with some of the universal design for learning and some of the training that's been happening across the district. So that is all tied into MTSS. And that is something that is important that we continue to do. So we should maintain those investments. And then the last thing is we received a grant, and this is at the high school. This is a youth employment specialist. And so our grant is five years. And this position is working very closely with the special educators at the high school. And their focus is to help students with transition planning. And what that means is preparing students with disabilities for life after high school, after they graduate. And so a youth employment specialist starts to work with some of the outside agencies, such as Hireability, which was formerly known as Volk Rehab. They also start to partner with adult services. They help students with job exploration, job training. They teach them just about interviewing and building their resume, about self-advocacy, all of those important things that are necessary for students to be successful when they graduate. And so that was a grant that we received. And you can see on that document that I broke down in years three, four, and five, what the district's contribution would be toward that position. And then in fiscal year twenty-seven, we would assume one hundred percent of that position. So this has allowed us to build the program over the period of the grant with some help from Hireability and some of the outside agencies that have areas of expertise in this area. So that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Five years for post-grad outcomes, the very last one you were talking about. So we're in year two of that now. How did it go last year?
So we are, we're seeing that the caseload, there are a certain number of students that the youth employment specialist works with. And so they send the report of different activities that they've been working on and jobs. And so when we're looking at the transition plans, students are meeting the goals that have been set in their transition plan for that specific domain. And that's the indicator that we're really looking at. Students are engaged. So it's definitely been a valuable position. And I think it will definitely benefit students in the long term.
That's third question. Okay, thank you so much, Mary. Thank you, everybody, for your presentations. This is part one of budget priorities. We used to do this just in the finance committee, and we've added it to the full board so that everyone can get this perspective. This all comes up before our community meeting, where we talk about the budget with the first or second draft, I guess, of the budget at that point. So this is an opportunity for everybody to get more information about what goes into our budget, what the new pieces are. This is at a broader level, and then next week will be at the school level or more specific, next week. Yeah, we're ready to move on? I feel like I have half the meeting that I don't even, the folks, I need to, I should join here. Sally.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was before, I just follows up with my, my line of questioning. I just, I wonder what role we play. I, when I'm asking this question about buses and what we should be driving and fuel tanks, I feel like definitely, fuel tank for sure feels like crossing into board territory because it's such a huge financial expense. I, I'm, I'm not a fan of just sort of throwing something out there and then not kind of hearing back. I know it's not necessarily like a discussion back and forth that we're debating, should we do something, some way? But what kind of follow-up we have, that's a significant financial investment. And, and in ten years, we're going to be sitting, talking about pulling this tank out. And we're just sort of throwing that money there. So, so, you know, John and Andrew, E D, I don't know how to necessarily follow that up. I also, I just want to say, I don't, I don't think Aaron answered my question in the sense that I was asking, and I think we should be asking, what is our larger scale approach around transportation? And I'm not throwing a crazy idea, and every parent out there that's watching this, but I know my kid does not ride the bus on a regular basis. She's one who can kind of probably cause a bus to overflow or not overflow. Should there be a different level of expectation for parents and bus riding? Because I think it is really hard to manage that many students and having a seventy-two passenger bus versus, because I'm thinking twenty-four passenger or twelve-passenger buses. As a radical reason, and I disagree. I think electric buses can work in the snow in Vermont, because it's working elsewhere. It works in Canada, can work here. So I just, this is one of those ones where I want to push it a little bit. I'm really not trying to show anybody, but just the fact that the, the idea that, the answer that I got was routing software, we can't do bigger. I wasn't interested in bigger, I'm interested in smaller, more buses, less kids on a bus. And that, again, feels like a very close line to cross. So I just wanted to put it out there. Climate change is, is something that we don't talk about here. And we are, other than maybe some facility stuff, we need to do better around transportation and climate change. we need to do better around transportation and climate change. My thing, my thing, I would like us to do better.
So I'm just, I just want to answer a little bit of that, two pieces. Yes, the board should be setting that big, whatever that big goal is, right? And we did it with facilities, right? We said, we put that number in the budget and we said, how much are we going to save on what it costs to run our facilities every year? And we're going to need a target, we're going to, we should do something like that, right? As to the response on what goes into this specific budget that's coming up, it sounds like you should join the finance. That's where those discussions are going to happen, kind of more granular levels, right? This is the broad, big picture. Let's get the whole board, all of that information so that we're more knowledgeable when we're talking community members, but.
Quite big ideas, Edie, I don't know what kind of size.
Just saying. So that's the, that's the answer to that. Other questions, comments? Oh, yes, Kevin, go ahead.
I'll put my hand down. Nope.
You put your hand down, right?
Yeah, so just, just to respond to the gentleman from Huntington, Ethan, and the com- uh comments about the busing. I I liked how you brought it back to um, you know, environmental stewardship. I think that's the level that I'm interested in engaging. You know, and and kind of setting policies that encourage the the tactical behaviors that you're poking at. So so not necessarily drive it the bus, but you know, kind of steer it in the right direction, so to speak. And you know, at one point, and I don't know, Edie, if you if you were alluding to it, but we did have you know, a budgetary target around you know, I think it was clean energy or something like that, where we would reduce, where we targeted, you know, finding opportunities in the budget. You know, from a cost perspective, but it, you know, I I think at a, you know, at the board level, we could put non-financial targets as well into the budgeting progress around clean energy and those types of things that may or may not, you know, have a financial impact in the short term. To, you know, just see what the administration would come up with for creative ideas for getting getting those achieved.
Good learning, Kevin, tactical, I like that word.
Other comments, questions? Okay, and yes, Kevin, that was what I was referring to. Sally. Hi, you tell us about what's going on right here.
Of course, hopefully you had a chance to read my principal's report. I'm sure a lot of you have a lot of questions about, you know, some of the things that are going on at First for Peers, which are going on, you know, really across the district and elementary schools. We have been focusing a lot, as Andrew mentioned, in the last year. We have been grateful, thank you. We've been focusing on some, really focusing on literacy and really focusing on early literacy, primarily on starting students in preschool and kindergarten with phonemic awareness, which is the hearing the sounds first. You know, the oral part, the auditory part of them hearing this out and before attaching this, you know, the symbol to the sound. So we're really focusing on phonemic awareness and then phonological awareness, which then is blending, segmenting. So all the early word recognition skills has been a huge among, a huge focus in the last year and a half, and we're making really good progress. We're going slow and steady. We're not pulling the rug out and just taking something or that we knew we were doing. We're just slowly inserting some of the practices that we know are going to really benefit our youngest leaders. So that has been a huge effort. It's been a lot of work. It's been professional development. It's been spending time in PLCs. It's been learning new screeners like Star that Andrew mentioned. So it's been a lot of change, but really all for the better and all going in a forward motion to make our readers the best readers they can be. And each year it's just going to get, just keep getting a little bit better and a little bit better. Math, we're focusing on inquiry, which is really problem solving and trying to obviously focus on the foundational skills, but similarly focus on using manipulatives and using, getting a really good grasp of the concepts before applying those concepts. So doing a lot of problem solving, doing, you know, that through warmups. So it's also a really exciting time, I think, in math too. Science and social studies, a lot of change. We're experiencing a lot of change positively. Our hope for science and social studies is to integrate that or make connections with literacy over time. So because we've been focusing a lot on literacy, we've been trying to balance it out a little bit because there's been a huge focus on that. I think we are really lucky, I've said this in the past in Huntington, because we spend quite a bit of time outside every week. So we use place-based education and the surroundings around us to help us with our teaching of science and even social studies, you know, civics and place-based, and also incorporating and integrating literacy and math when we're outside. So I feel really grateful that we have a community forest literally steps away from our school and that every class has an outdoor classroom up in the woods that they spend time in every week. So I feel really grateful for that. Does anybody have questions? I mean, I don't know, I I want to go through the whole thing, but um I I think the other thing I would like to say is we we have wonderful parents here. We am grateful every single day for parents that are involved that help us with our Pi group, which is Partners in Education, volunteering in many capacities. We had a little bit of a halt during COVID, which everybody did. But last year and this year, we're just re kind of regaining the traction and it's been really great. We have wonderful new families of, you know, preschool, kindergarten families that have just, you know, taken the school kind of by storm and making some really positive changes and coming in in capacities, not only just fundraising and getting enrichment, but just participating back in the classrooms and being involved in that way. Does anybody have questions? Hi, Gail.
I wish very much you'd lose. You mean why? I don't think, and so I can, if you would ask me whether the current crisis in education is books. All across the country, people are banning books. Now, if you look at school boards across the country, there's parents protesting at board meetings, and on and on and on. I'm assuming that here in, here in Connecticut, we don't have anybody trying to ban our books, do we?
I mean, I think there's, it's different in all the different communities. I feel like the librarians have been working together about navigating how to deal with that. So Molly's our librarian here. We haven't specifically here at that. We've been trying to be really mindful about, because it also intersects with some of the work that we're doing with our anti-bias, anti-racist work. So we're trying to be really mindful about being responsive to the questions that people have, but also knowing that we're an educational institution. And how can we use maybe some of this literature to educate children? So I think it's a little bit of a different climate in Vermont than across the nation. I don't want to say that's a sweeping generalization, sorry about that. But I think it might be. So we haven't really had a lot of that here in our town. But I know that in some of the towns, there's been a lot of questions about that and a lot of, you know, concerns and rightly so. But I think we just address it from an educational standpoint. And I think that's how we have to do it, in a learning standpoint. So so in Huntington here, we haven't had a lot of, you know, a lot of questions about that, about banning books or inquiries about that.
Parents standing at your door asking for all these kinds of issues.
People have been asking questions, they've been asking questions with that and specifically had that question, get that answered here question.
Kevin, I see you have a hand up.
Yep, uh thanks, but hand down. Yeah, just a comment and I think another comment, but maybe a question, we'll see how it goes. To to Gail's point, oddly, in the last, I think, three weeks, I had one community member say that I I went into the library in one of the middle schools and uh, you know, I I was very upset with some of the books that I saw on the shelf. So I, you know, there's at least somebody out there who has some feelings about the books. We're not, we're not all on the same page with that, sorry. The Sally, with the um, the literacy approach that you mentioned, you know, in in your introduction there, there were, there were two articles that came out, I think this week, back to back, one in seven days and one in VT Digger about the methodologies that our schools are using in in Vermont and how they they need to be changed. And I had one community member reach out to our our Underhill representatives over email this weekend. I think Andrew's gonna, if he hasn't already, get get back to them on on the question. But have you had a, just to put you on the spot, because you've been coming to our meetings longer than I've been coming to them. So I think you can handle it. Have you had a, you know, any inquiries from from the public or parents about how we are teaching early literacy? And does it align with the best practices and recommendations? Or do we have some differences there?
Yes, I've had some questions about it. I think to answer your question for a period of time, it, this is like technical term, so if you want me to explain it again, but some of the pedagogy was involving a cueing system, which is using a picture and a different way of approaching learning at the beginning stages of learning to read. And really, if that system can work for some students, that can work for some. But what we know works for all students and is best practice practice for all students is really attending to the print and hearing the sounds, like I was saying, learning, having a strong foundation in phonemic awareness, which is the auditory component, and then working towards the attaching the sound symbol correspondence and using the print to guide the act of early reading, not necessarily the picture or cueing system. So that's what we've been sort of replacing and inserting into our instruction in the last few years and slowly adding more. So does that answer your question? We are doing those practices and we are we are moving away from using a cueing system and using this especially in the very earliest for our early readers. Teaching, the teaching of reading. Does that answer your question, Kevin?
Yeah, is that something that you are doing or our district is doing in response to something else? Or what's what's driving that change?
So I would say the science of reading is not new. It is, it is the theory and practice that's been around for a long time. I think what's changed is that between the pandemic and some other factors over the last probably five to six years, we've noticed more students not probably reaching the goals that we want them to reach. So we're adjusting our practice to have more students reach those goals and not need so much remediation, if that makes sense. So it's, it's kind of like a perfect, I don't want to say it's a perfect storm, but I think some of, some of what was happening during the pandemic sort of fed into this. But I think we've just sort of been awakened to saying, okay, we know that these practices work for some students, but we know there are some practices that we must start at a very young age that work for all students and lay a really strong foundation for all students learning how to read. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. I I guess I'll ask it just a little bit differently. I'm I'm just trying to understand what, like you have, when I, when I asked what's driving it, you said, well, there's a need, the pandemic. Are are you taking that responsibility on yourself to bridge that gap and coming up with changes to the approach? Or are you getting guidance from the district at large or the state? Or what are you drawing from to to close those gaps?
So our entire district, so Andrew and our our literacy coach and our district as a whole, especially, you know, I would say the entire district, but especially in element, at the elementary level, the schools at the elementary level, working together to adjust our practices and shift our practices to include the practices that we know are going to target every single child. So it is just, it's district-wide and it's all the elementary schools cohesively together, making these changes.
Great, thank you.
And to answer your question, across the state, it's happening across the state as well, in different ways. Our approach might be a little bit different, but it's across the state and actually across the nation. Yeah, it's just, I mean, the difference, yeah, the difference is in Vermont, it's left to local control. And so it has to happen in district by district, right school by school. There isn't a bigger, the agency of education is not pushing this. Different topic, different day.
Um, I had a question, if nobody else has any questions. I'm curious, there was a, a lot of discussion about the forest and hunting. And I know that you're outdoors a lot and I'm curious how that was resolved and if you're comfortable with the resolution.
Wait, so repeat that again, looking at me.
When the forest came online,
Oh, right.
there was a lot of discussion about hunting and whether folks would be able to hunt and how that would work with the school. And I just, you know, we're here in a public meeting, I want to, how, sure. Where do you lose, how did that resolve and are you?
It actually resolved pretty well. I think if you actually on the, if you head out in the front hallway on the community board, there's a beautiful map. We have, which we have always had, we have a safety zone, which is adjacent to the school, a very large zone that's adjacent to the school, where there is no hunting. They are tracking Huntington Community Forest, Georgia County is tracking how how much hunting is actually happening and occurring in the forest. We teach the students, every student has an orange bandana, whether we're going, wherever we're going out during hunting season, just because we're teaching students to be mindful. If you live in Vermont or in a place where there's hunting, you want to be careful regardless. So we still go out, we don't go as deep into the forest. We're much, you know, during the hunting seasons, the teachers know when the hunting seasons are. So we stay in the safety zone or closer to school during that time. But I think overall, I think it's going really well in the last few years. Can answer your question, thank you, yeah.
I think tracking was also a part of that conversation and there was more.
Same boundary.
Yes, but just a different, yeah, different dynamic.
I also have a question.
Sure.
Are you still doing, or I may be misremembering, where, was it all day on Fridays that students were outside?
So the kindergarteners and the third and fourth graders are outside for, I would say like eighty to eighty-five percent of the day on Friday, yeah. Yeah, and then the the one-twos have different days and it's like divided a little bit of a different way. It's not the entire day, but much of the day. Yeah, so it's different days, yes.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. Great, thank you so much, Sally, have a great evening.
And you don't have to stay.
Thank you. He's here for folks on lines, just apply it.
All right, so Act 127 information, do you want me to introduce it, John? Do you want to introduce it? What are we?
Whichever you prefer.
So Act 2027 was passed by the legislature two years ago. Is that right, two years ago? And it is a change to school funding. And it goes into effect next year, which is the budget we're working on now, which is why we're talking. We've been talking about it off and on for, since it was passed, knowing that our district, because we don't have much poverty, we don't have many English language learners and we are not considered a rural district or Vermont, will have reduced funding by about three hundred and fifty students, is that right? Based on current.
We're like using the, yep.
Yep, so um, so because this new formula funds students differently than it is today, that is huge risk for our district. So it's upcoming, it's a big budget cut perhaps, or a big tax increase for the folks who live in our district. And so we wanted to talk about what it is and how it works so that we are all, we all have the same baseline understanding. And um, this is not as simple. so that we are all, um, we all have the same baseline understanding and um, this is not a simple thing to understand. If you, it it's not, so if you don't understand it the first time we go through it today, we will go through it again multiple times this year. It can be talked about one-on-one, we can set up smaller groups. It's very complicated because if if there's a form, if there's a way to fund things that is simple, it is uh, less progressive, am I going to use, am I using the right words? And the more complicated you make it, the more progressive is, which means the people who can afford more pay more. So that's what this is designed to do. So that's the why, but not the what. So I'm gonna let John and Nicole do the what, because they get the hard part.
Thank you, Edie. That was a really good setup. And could you put it on the screen? Jeff, here. I guess I could. And I'll just like say when we're ready, you can help me with that. You can draw it. So Act one twenty-seven, also known as S two eighty-seven, um, is uh, you know, is gonna take effect next school year into the budget that that we're working on right now. I'm gonna be throwing a lot of information, so I'd really recommend that you study it later, ask questions. Um, Nicole and I, I'm gonna go through the presentation. If I miss something, or Nicole wants to add something, she will. Um, but we spent quite a bit of time with some even recently new information putting this presentation together. I'm gonna give you some really high-level bullet points about the why. And then some of what has changed um, in the 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 waiting system, and then some models for you to to take a look at, so you can try to understand this transition that that we're making. I took this language, the this slide um, right from the summary that came from the educat, the Agency of Education last year. Uh, it's a, it's it's an act related to equity and then trying to improve um, student outcomes. Um, and they do twirl in their oversight. I'm not sure that this particular law, the way it is right now, is gonna meet that, but um, I could be wrong. Jeff? So really high level, highlight from the law, increase equity, improve outcomes. Uh, we tried to simplify the formula, the funding formula, uh, and to uh, increase a accountability um, and and trying to ensure that there's equitable resources for students across Vermont. Then they updated the categories that are in the waiting system, which I share in the screen. Um, and uh, the actual weights have been uh, updated as well and some of the terms. So we've used equalized pupils for a long, long time. But that word is really going away. So we're gonna be using long-term weighted ADM. And we we do have a slide later on that just highlights what that is.
What is ADM standard?
Uh, gonna get to that. It's a definition of terms is coming too.
Right.
And again, some highlights of the law. It limits the the tax rate impact for um, for uh, for forty years. So from twenty twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine. And it also looks at ed spending. You'll notice I'm not using ed spending pre-equalized pupil anymore, because that's gone. But and education spending for pupil still remains. And if you're ten percent um, above uh, where you were the prior year, then you can, there can be some serious implications um, associated with that. Um, talk about, a little bit about um, that excessive spending and the property tax rate, you might not be limited to that five percent cap. What would happen is it would go to this committee that is assembled by the Secretary of Education. They would take a really close look at your spending and say, no, you're not spending excessively, or yes, you are. And if you are, they're gonna take the actual tax rate based on your spending and apply that um, to the tax rate. So it could be instead of five percent, it could be a twenty-two percent increase. That makes sense? Um, and I'll have a slide that will help highlight that a little bit. Uh, it requires the the universal income let declaration form. Jeff, that's gone out, right? Um, we've shared that with people. And we're hoping people fill it out. Um, it it required the Agency of Education to put it together, but doesn't require people to fill it out. Not at this time.
That's all right. You said people, you mean?
Yes, yep.
Family, community?
Yep, exactly.
Should be encouraging people to fill them out.
Yes, and we put it out many, many times. But the part of it is, it's not tied to, you know, getting a break in your lunch anymore. Um, it's it's really tied to um, the tax rate. Uh, then it also really specifies what some of the services that are gonna be offered to our English language learners. And that if if you are a district, and there are many in Vermont that have less than twenty-five English language learners, then you're gonna get like a categorical grant, which essentially is, you know, a bulk set of money um, to serve the students that you have. And it suspends the excess spending threshold, which we haven't, that hasn't been an issue for us for probably fifteen years, but it was pre-merger um, for some districts. Um, but it suspends that, um, which is a penalty if you're, if you're um, your ed spending pre-equalized pupil was really, really high. And then it also, the ballot language, I don't know if you remember, but we used to, you used to, it was statutory that you had to put on there, your ed spending pre-equalized pupil and what the increase was from the previous year. That's not gonna work, you know, under this system important. That makes sense?
I know.
It might just be suspended during the transition.
I I I'd be interesting to see.
Might get out of this.
Yeah, how they're gonna, how they'll do it. Um, but it's, it is sunset, so it could come back. So so here's some key points. And I, you know, I won't read them all to you, but um, this is some of the reasons why, behind why they made the changes. I'll just give you a minute to read it. You don't really need to um, read that to you.
There's that again.
Yep, and we'll get to definition of the terms, which will make sense to you. The the whole point is to try to increase equity. And um, by adjusting uh, the weighting for for students and districts. Definition of terms. Um, these are important because average daily membership, those, those are, the state had defined like you're in the, you are in school for twenty days during this period of time, recounting you as a student in our district. That makes sense? So if we have twenty-six hundred pre-K to twelve students, that's our ADM. And then um, we get into the weighted, a lot of the long-term membership. So that is essentially the two-year average. The prior year and the um, the the year that you're budgeting for and um, and we also take, this is getting in the weeds a little bit, but also we add state-based students in there. So if you're a child that is in foster care, you get added directly into our um, our long-term um, average. That makes sense? That helpful, like see the um, I always, you know, the uh, the people in the school, the chill students, that's our ADM. John, there two counts in here? Nope, just want this one, okay? And then this is the old weights. Okay, these are old. This is what we're using this school year. And pre-K was weighted at point four-six. And I won't read these to you, because you've heard me cite these so many times. Um, and then uh, SEAL of poverty and English learners, they have a a a different weight as well. This is all going away. We use it for this budget year, but it, for FY twenty-five, the year that we're planning for right now, this is gone. And here are, here's the new weights. Um, and this may not make sense to you right now, but when we get into some of the later slides, um, it it will. Um, yeah, and so triple E, yeah, it it kind of works in the same way. It's point five-four, they're subtracting from the whole, and it'll make more sense when we get into some of the later slides. And then the separate waitings for middle, secondary, poverty, English learners. Then we also get into sparsity, which we do have some sparsity here, and you'll see that in one of the slides. Um, small schools as well, but you can't get the small school grant and qualify for this. Um, and what we've been told by the state is we don't have. Um, we're, we're, we're not, we're in, at least in the modeling that they do have done for us, we don't have anybody that constitutes that.
Kevin, you have a question?
Thanks, Edie. John, are are these additive to one? Or or does one no longer represent anything?
They're additive. So in the next slide, I I think that'll, that'll make sense. But maybe not. It doesn't, you know, they're talking about.
If you go, sorry to uh, hear me, if you don't mind, go go back to what we have today. We have elementary is one, and and I think you made a comment where the the weighting tries to normalize it back to the one. Um, but the the new, and we go to the new. Um, you know, some of these are left, so so is it one plus what we have here?
They're gonna, they're gonna add these or subtract them from the long-term weighted ADM.
ADM, okay. So so we take your twenty-six hundred ADM or whatever it is that we have. And then based on how those students fit into these categories, it will go up or down based on these weights.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. That makes sense to people. Well, I'll try to outline it in the slide, the next slide, but essentially they're gonna take that weighted um, long-term ADM, and they're gonna take that the the ADM, and then they're gonna add the weights to it.
John, is elementary still one? I don't see.
Um, it it is because you're adding.
Okay.
You're not adding anything to it. So essentially weighted at one.
Just one. Okay. I just want, I didn't see it up here, so I was.
Because it's zero, you're, because it's additive.
Right, okay. That's, I wanted to just make sure that's.
So here's the, so we're using the FY twenty-four data, so the data that we have this year. And we um, took our long-term ADM. Um, and we did our weights, and this is what we came up with. So this number would be add that, um, this number would be added to the ADM. And that, and and that's how we would get, uh, that would be a central part of the funding formula. So this is, these are all our weights. And we would add them to our ADM. That makes sense?
Yep.
So I'm gonna get to um, some modeling. So but before I do this, so say our um, our average two-year ADM was twenty-six, two thousand six hundred twelve. We take the two hundred six thousand and twelve, and we would add this weight to it. And that would be our long-term um, ADM. That makes sense?
I have one, one more question.
Sure.
What, do you, can you tell us which part of our district fits sparsity?
Boy, I don't know that. Um, but we'd have to dig in that. I I didn't find that in the spreadsheet. Nicole, did you know? No, they didn't.
No, they didn't. I can ask.
So they just took all of our students' families' addresses, put it through the magic black box.
Yes.
Yes, they're bad, they might, they had to get it somewhere. They looked at where um, people lived and they, that's how they did the sparsity test. So they did not isolate that in the spreadsheet, but we can find out.
Thank you.
Another piece of transparency in the funding model.
Yeah, I mean, this is a very big sea change. I guess I, I didn't emphasize that probably enough. I mean, this is this is very different than what we have been doing for, you know, twenty years. Um, so I don't expect you to, you know, understand this at all tonight. We're gonna keep revisiting it. I'm gonna come meet with the the communications committee. Um, I do plan on, you know, to get something out in extra district happenings. I was telling Edie I planned on doing that, but they changed some of the terms and some of the um, in the last week, and I needed to be able to absorb it and understand it. So that's why Nicole and I sat down for, you know, quite a good stretch of time and um, and try, and I, you know, I think did a pretty good job of figuring it out. So one of the things we also tried to do is this um, is give you a sort of a comparison. The AOE did share with us if we um, if we were in the our current state, um, then and then this is what the equalized pupils, this would have been the impact on the equalized pupils. Does that, does that make sense too? So uh, I'll, I'll start from um, way left and go right, but these on the, it's the districts. Um, the actual districts are the far left. Then it is their FY twenty-four equalized pupils right from their, right from the budget. So whatever they reported to the state is right there, and you can see us. And then we revised that um, for the, using the Act one twenty-seven weighting. And that's where we, and you can see some of the changes. So some of the changes are, you have, you know, Winuski going up, three hundred eighty-seven equalized pupils, and us going down, three hundred and fifty-seven equalized pupils. Then we took, they also just took the approved tax rate, what what was reported to the state. And um, then we modeled it and revised it for Act one twenty-seven. And and then we um, cited the change to the far right. So it just gives you an idea of the impact based on, you know, the best information we have right now, which is our current budget. Um, now, this doesn't include the cap, right? There's a five percent cap in there, but if there wasn't, this would be the complete impact. Coincidentally, the the advantaged districts under this law, they get, they get um, the equalized pupil, or they get the impact immediately. But for disadvantaged districts, you know, the 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 state wisely, um, you know, put a cap, because it would have been catastrophic um, for for districts like, like, you know, several districts around the state. And then we also did another mo, this is an estimate. I underline that this is a model. So um, but it, what we did is we compared the tax rate impact under one twenty-seven this year and what that would have looked like. And then we also modeled with the F, you know, with a hypothetical five percent change, you know, what the increase would be. So the couple of things I want to point out to you. And this is where it gets, I think, kind of complicated. The the state used to use an equalization factor. I think it was point six-four. And um, they would take that equalization factor and they would multiply it by your ADM, by your um, by your ADM um, and your weights. And now what they have said, at least the best information that we have is that they're, they, to model this, the AOE has said, okay, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take um, that equalization factor, and we're gonna multiply it by the the base yield amount. Um, can you see that in here? So this number last year was um, was much higher. I think it was thirteen thousand, what, Nicole, do you remember?
Fourteen.
Okay, uh, so um, so you can see that this base yield amount, which is a critical factor, they took that equalization factor and they multiplied it by the last. they took that equalization factor and they multiplied it by the last year's, uh, base yield of, uh, amount, and that's how they got this lesser number. Okay? So the modeling that we did on the last slide, um, we did that so you could see the, see the impact, uh, of that with the new base yield amount. So this isn't, there's only so much money, right? So they weren't gonna keep that base yield amount at fourteen because then, you know, would have just blown the budget. Um, you know, just unaffordable completely. So what they've done is that they lowered the base yield amount, which effectively raises your tax rate. Make sense? The higher this number is, that ninety-eight, twenty-two, the lower your tax rate is. So the impact with the equalized pupils, this is, uh, you know, we showed you what it would have been. And now we're showing you under, you know, under this new formula, what it would look like in FY twenty-five with a hypothetical increase. So the good news is, you know, based on, you know, this five percent, we would not be subject to that ten percent, um, increase in net spending. That make sense? That's something that we said was a priority. We wanted to try to do, but we were worried we might not be able to. But it looks like that, you know, that will not impact us. We have spent a lot of money. Um. Anything, Nicole, you want to highlight in this slide?
Um. No, I think you did a good job without getting too far into the weeds. I, I think the biggest takeaway, like you said, from this is not being subject to the tax review board. And just. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, and that base yield amount is down law. And that, so that's, that's driving up the tax rate. So one of the other pieces I thought I'd shared with you is that, you know, it looks like we're getting, we're getting more students, seven hundred and, um, I can't remember forty-six, but there are many districts are getting percentage-wise much more than us. Okay? All right, the next slide, um.
Just that more.
So this is another model, um, that shows our, what our, our tax rate actually was last year. That this is the, you know, the budget that we passed. And again, you know, under, um, Act twenty-seven, so this is an apples-to-apples sort of comparison. What our, what our actual tax rate was last year and the methodology and the arithmetic that goes into it. And yeah, um, in FY twenty-five, if we had a five percent increase, this is, this is what the, the tax effects would be. And we put a statement at the bottom that just shows that, you know, we'll be taxed. So this isn't gonna be the full impact, but then that is, you know, without the cap, that's what our percentage increase would be. That make sense? Again, hypothetical, because we don't, we haven't gone through the budget process and we wanted to give you a chance to say, okay, here's what we floated on last year. You know, here would be the full impact of Act one-twenty-seven. And with the cap, um, this is what the tax rate would be. So a couple of points are really kind of important, I think, for the board to understand is for at least ten years, probably, um, uh, or close to it. We have, uh, maybe eight, we have had like relatively flat or a little bit tax rate or lower for almost a decade. So this is a big deal. We have not seen a five percent increase in our tax rate for a very long time. So this is, you know, this is gonna be a surprise to, um, you know, I think, community members because the common level of appraisal, you know, is not going away. They're, it's still gonna be adjusted for your common level of appraisal. So it, you know, it impacts each town a little bit differently.
And I would just have a caveat to what you just said. While our budget tax rate has not changed, some town tax rates have been moving because of.
Because of the CLA. Yes, that's a good point. Um, I'm talking about just the tax rate that we control.
So I think it's something that when I've been talking to people about this, it's like a double, like enrichment. It's a double whammy because we just had reappraisals, right? And people are seeing their taxes go up considerably. That number is, does, like, this is, that's not controlled by us. This number is the number that is controlled by us, but it contributes to the amount of taxes that each property owner pays.
Yes. If that was a nice way to put it.
It's a multiplier, right? You would multiply one point four seven four times your assessed value and that gets your tax amount.
Yeah.
Part of your tax.
So if you're at a hundred percent, like if you're at a hundred percent of, of the pure market value and the grand list, then that's what you would pay. But if you're above it, below it, it adjusts your tax rate so that you would be at a hundred percent.
And so, so I'm just gonna back up before you. So because if Richmond was recently reassessed, your number will be lower because your housing value is closer to what it should be.
Okay.
Right? So if a town has been, it's been longer since they've been recently assessed, then their, um, estimated home stay tax rate will probably be higher than the Richmond. This is
They do that.
Probably likely, you know, that's just how it looks. So yeah, so you, your house value is higher, but that percentage won't be as high as it would be in other areas or won't be as high as it was before it was assessed.
Right. Richmond's, Richmond was, was, hadn't been reappraised for a while. So it kept getting further and further from that, uh, the common level of, you know, that hundred percent mark. Because the, um, the houses were selling for more on average.
Right.
So it kept moving away from that number. So they, to make sure that somebody that's at a hundred percent isn't paying, um, yeah, uh, more or less than somebody that isn't, they adjust those tax rates. So it's supposed to be equalized. So I think this is really, really hard for people and I get it. But the, the adjustment in the common level of appraisal is to try to make it fair. So to try to make it equalized because there was, I think it was Underhill, their houses were appraised higher than the grand list. And, um, so they actually, you know, they saw a reduction, but it, it depends on where, where it falls. Um, and they take it's a, it's a, it is a three-year rolling average of home sales that are, that are sold.
We'll have more time to talk about this as we do more budget things. It's, yeah.
I can go on and on about this because I've lived here for so many years and I, I, uh, and it fascinates me too. So it's something I like to think about and work with. I mean, I don't like the facts, certainly all the time, but it's, it is pretty fascinating. But I tell you what, um, thank goodness for the cap. Because, um, what you're gonna notice is that with this cap, there are still gonna be many districts in Chitting County and around us that have a higher tax rate to us for a while. Because we were on the lower side. Um, when you compared us, you know, in Chitting County.
On the lower side.
The tax rate.
Okay.
So this is something that I'm gonna just go.
Yes, yes.
To go back, could you go back to the weighted slides? You guys probably want to.
Kevin, we're gonna come to you in just a second.
But this just gives you a sense of, you know, these were, where's the actual tax rate? Uh, maybe you don't have it there, but.
Approved budget.
Oh, right here. So you can see, you know, here's us. Colchester was lower, but everybody else is higher. And this could have been because they had a surplus, you know, a big surplus that they had to apply. I don't know that. Um. So, so that just gives you a comparison.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thanks, Edie. That was good. John, on the, uh, on the, if you can go to the, the five percent, uh, cap slide.
Cap slide.
At twenty-two point thirty-three, you know, what it would be if you didn't have. Line crossed through it and artificially we would put a five percent there. Um, because the state has, you know, um, throttled the impact of this change. Um, so that means we're left with, like, seventeen percent of, um, transitional debt that someday we're going to experience. Uh, after that five percent, um, you know, triggers out or, or goes away, right?
You're still muted.
Yes and no, I think is the answer because we're not, this, the change in the way the funding is done is this year. This is the year where all of the big change is happening and we have five years, right? Five years of five percent cap, starting with this rate.
Right.
Um, as long as.
So this is. Yeah.
Increasing our budget significantly, in theory, we're gonna be close to catching up by that point because hopefully the funding isn't gonna change again. Hopefully we're not gonna have more drastic, um, issues with how, you know, with our funding.
We, we might be able to perhaps chip away at it in the later years because we might have a budget increase of less than five percent. But with our current, uh, labor agreement, uh, that would be challenging.
Correct.
Yep. And that's how the five percent is hypothetical, just to give you a sense, just some comparisons. Um, but at some point, the tax rate will be your real tax rate.
Right. Yeah, that, I, I would say, you know, if we use this one again, maybe the, um, estimated change of our spending should be closer to our target to avoid the five percent reuse. Um, because I, I thought initially that five percent was talking about the cap on the, on the spending. But that's just a plug number for what in your model you're anticipating the budget increase to be.
Yeah, we can, that could be three, could be.
Yeah, just, we just make that one something different than five and I, and I think I would follow it better. Um, and I'll just make the comment, uh, one other thing, why I got the mic here, um, sorry, Edie, on the, uh, small school. Um, it's interesting that, you know, we have towns in our district that would otherwise qualify as a small school. But because we're a single district, they don't? Is that why we don't qualify for any small school?
Think so. No, um.
I would, I would bring that one back and, you know, really push on that one because I think that's, uh, going, you know, potentially going in the wrong direction.
It's a population curse in the square mile. It's still, the small school is still of the amount of population within a certain square mile radius, so it's still a.
If we, sorry, if we qualify for sparsity, then, you know, we should have a small school as well, but because we're one district, I bet we are completely disqualified.
I don't think so. Not supposed to work that way. I could be wrong.
So, John, this is Andrew. Can I ask a question? Um, one of the things that happened during the merger is the small schools grant that Smiley was receiving was grandfathered. Did that change with Act one-twenty-seven? Are, are, is there no longer a, a small schools grant that, that's calculated that way?
I haven't seen that in the notes. I think that we're still gonna get the small schools grant, but what I, and we'll have to go back and check this, but, but you can't get both. You know what I mean? You can't get the white and the gray. At least that's what I heard at a meeting, but that could be, I think we would wanna check that out.
We, I have a question. Do you know if the numbers work better if we got, decided we didn't want the grant and wanted to open the small schools instead? Is there one more, that's more beneficial for us than the other?
I don't know. We'd have to check that too. Um, I know that was something that Noel Cole and I talked about as well. Is just wanting to get a little bit more clarity on that from the A and P.
All right. So is everybody properly confused and, um, feeling like they have a lot of homework to do? If so, we did some of our.
Correct.
Of course, yes.
Um, are there any things that we can do to mitigate this? So I'm thinking, uh, there were clearly some categories that weighted heavier English language learners. If suddenly there were a hundred English language learners in the district, how would that change the dynamic, for example?
We'd get more, uh, you know, weighted long-term ADM.
From our country, are you thinking of?
Well, no, I'm, I'm actually, I don't know if it's even possible, but I just want to say, something I know, there's no age cap to go to high school in Vermont. There are hundreds of English language learners who work towards their high school credential that cannot, based on current agency of education policy, through the adult ed system.
Um, I'm thinking small academy. I mean, yeah, the more, the more of those categories you have, the more weighting you have now. And, you know, as they, um, and the AOE has said it would cost more money. That's why they have more weighting on. So, you know, um, so there's, it's supposed to equalize it. I guess that's the first of the, so your point is really in the essence of the law. Um, and we're, and we're actually, we're, you know, we're using last year's. But I think, you know, this year we probably doubled our P L L, um, population. Maybe more than that, maybe more than that whole. So that weighting is gonna go up. We're just using this year's. Does that make sense? And then I just put on our targets. These are our targets.
Um, and just to add, this is something we've talked about for affordable housing in our towns would make a difference too.
Definitely.
So, right Diane? Just kidding, don't answer. Okay, um, not calling it. Okay, I think we're ready to move on, right? This is a Jericho conversation that Diane and I have regularly.
Yeah, um, you know, be thinking if you could, particularly folks on the communication committee, like what do you, you know, look at this and think of some questions? Because of maybe some modeling we could do that you think would be helpful. Because it's gonna take a lot of communication. I, you know, I, I am worried that, uh, this will be a big shock to people, even though we have to try to do some communication around it. It's so, there's so many here for moving parts. I think it'll be really hard.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Will we go on?
Yes.
I am on that committee that you're referring to. That's gonna make everything completely clear. Uh, but my thought through this presentation is the typical public doesn't know anything about the old. They don't. What you call it, they, you know, so there's, so the transition from the old to the new, you know, it, it won't help if we try to explain what the old was, you know? So I think for us to get, I don't mind if John gets lost in the weeds, but if we get lost in the weeds, then I, then I don't think we'll be helpful because the answer is, is the state changed their funding formula? And certain kinds of districts get less money and some get more money. And the ones that generally get more money, those that have more complicated student bodies to educate, those that have more simple student bodies to educate, like ours, look at our students. They get less money and, and eventually that'll have an impact on your tax. But with the five percent cap on there, you don't. Most of us are gonna live through that transition. So I, I, that can be right, you know? People don't know what, what, what's been. So I don't, I don't think we need to, don't try to pair the new and the old. It's, you know, the jargon on the old was any good either.
Yeah, you did a really good job with simplifying that. You're getting thumbs ups from the job. Um, okay, so I am looking at the time.
Nicole was right.
Nicole was raised for her.
Uh, yes, Nicole.
Sorry, I just, I wanted to say that I really appreciate that. Because I think that's something that John and I have gone back and forth on a lot of, like, how to present this information. And I just think that that was really helpful to hear. And based on the thumbs up, I think other people are in agreement. So, thank you.
You thought I was asleep.
I never made jerks laugh. There's a lot that happens behind those eyelids. I know that. Um, okay, so I'm looking at the time. It's eight forty, um, which is after our scheduled time to have a meeting. Um, and I still wanna have an executive session. So I am going to propose that we approve the meeting minutes, vote on a V S D A voting delegate, and then push the other items to the next meeting. Sure. Is that, folks are comfortable with that? I'm not seeing anybody saying, no, I wanna be here longer. Okay, so let's do that. Um, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September twenty sixth?
So moved.
Thank you. What did you hear first, Ben? You got that?
Kevin, second.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, John, really, so, so this, this is the policy that came before us. We got feedback from all, what's the name? Altogether, Altogether Now, Thank You Project. We took that to, um, our attorney. And the, some of their feedback, we can include, some of their feedback we can't include. Um, some of their feedback would have put our policy back into language, um, that we are moving past as a district, right? Our older language, they were kind of saying they wanted some of that. We and we don't wanna accept that link. We wanna keep moving forward with the policy with the way we're doing the work. Um, some of the language they wanted to change, um, because it is not the language that is used in the treatment culture, but we have to use the language because it's a legal statute. So in order to be compliant with the legal statute, we have to use, for example, the term abuse. Um, and then the rest, we added the language that they proposed to. So just quick question, um, is there a way to differentiate that and have we, um, should be, I think it's the bullets right in the at the bottom? Well, no, right in the agenda. Sorry, I didn't see that. Oh, I see now. I just had the policy out. Um, and have we informed them of that? Do they just have a, they gave us feedback?
Great.
Maybe I'll just.
Very fantastic.
Um, and that could be one of my last official.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Um, any further discussion on the policy? Call in favor of approving the, oh, no, sorry. Did I just jump? I said approve meeting minutes and then I started talking about this time drug and alcohol.
Right.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we are. I didn't hear what he said.
Point of order.
Point of order, yes. Sorry, we're still talking about the meeting minutes from nine twenty-six. Any changes, modifications, any adjustment to those minutes? Call in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Diane, are you? Are you? Okay, I'm seeing, I'm seeing everybody in favor. Yeah.
Can I just start? The times for the executive session went at the beginning.
Were not evident?
No. In at least in the couple that I have, it should be.
Um, okay.
So I could work with.
We have the, we have.
Yes, I saw them. So.
See, that's the only thing that we'll need for tonight, for somebody to, the clerk. So, you know, email Pat and I what time you came out of the executive session or what time you adjourned.
Lisa's our clerk.
What's that?
Lisa's our clerk. How's just, yeah.
So I'll have a.
I'll add those in. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Okay.
Can I, um, just have a clarification? Should I wait until we improve it to in, like, touch base?
You could touch base with them.
Okay, great.
I just wanna, yeah. Um, okay, so, um, we need a voting delegate for the V S D A meeting, which is at the end of the month. Um, it's one person. Um, Diane has volunteered, right, Diane?
Um, sort of, but I was gonna nominate you to do it.
I can do it. I will be there.
I mean, I'll, I'll be there too, but I think, um, you, as chair, I think you've got, um, the your finger on the pulse of a lot of things, and I think that it would be great if you did it.
Happy to do it.
I need you to be on the rip. Second.
Okay, all in favor? I can ask for other, any opposed? No, I'm not in favor. All right, I was the voting rep for the V S D A, uh, meeting at the end of the month. Um, and it is not an extra meeting. Students, don't worry. Um, okay, and then, um, I need a motion to go into executive session. Correct? We agree that we're gonna push everything else.
Yep, and we're just gonna pick up.
Yes. Um, salute. Second, should others moving, maybe second big.
Red though.
Yes, you need, can you read the, um, what about, are we moving to executive session under, um, after specifically finding that the personnel matter falls within exemption of the public record law? I think, again, I said it. That's, that's, yeah. Yep.